I'm gonna call to order the Board of Alderman meeting Monday, December 8th, 2025. Roll call?
Schenkel.
Present.
Jones.
Present.
Brown is absent. Polley.
Present.
Huckabee.
Present.
And Long is absent.
Chief Hopeless, would you open us to order prayer?
Before we think of this day, think of our community, think of all those that are gathered tonight, and as business is being done for our city, we pray you lead, guide, and direct. And also thank you for this Christmas season, and thank you for giving us your Son Jesus. It's your name we pray.
Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, on to the approval of minutes for the Board of Alderman meeting dated November 24th, 2025.
Move to approve those minutes as presented.
Second.
Motion to approve the minutes as presented by Alderman Polley, second by Alderman Huckabee. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Minutes of the special board meeting dated November 25th, 2025.
Move to approve those minutes as presented.
Second.
Motion to approve the minutes as presented by Alderman Schenkel, second by Alderman Jones. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Minutes of the closed session meeting dated November 25th, 2025.
Move to approve those minutes as presented.
Second.
Motion to approve the minutes as presented by Alderman Polley, second by Alderman Schenkel. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, public communications and remarks of the general public. Each speaker is limited to three minutes or less. If you choose to speak, please state your first and last name.
My name is Crystal Gasser. And we all see sitting before us several men who apparently are passionate about what they stand for. I don't know any of you gentlemen personally, as I have only had a few conversations with a few of you. But to start this process of trying to impeach the mayor has to be backed by something you are passionate about. Or is it? Now I'm going to hope and pray that your mind and your hearts can be open to really evaluate if this wasteful spending is worth what you are trying to accomplish here. I think I can speak for many residents that we all understand that four of you, which two of them aren't here, are accusing the mayor of wrongdoing. But I would like to ask you this: Have any of you ever made a mistake and did wrongdoing to only be shunned and pushed aside? I will say this: Travis is a young man whom, in my opinion, has the best intentions and means well. Did he make a mistake? Maybe. Maybe he did. Maybe he didn't. But shouldn't all of you gentlemen be good stewards and offer guidance and forgiveness to a young man whom feels just as passionate as yourselves? A good steward is a person who is responsible and a wise manager of resources like money, time, and talents. Have you pulled the plank out of your own eyes before trying to pull his out? If he did do wrong, then let's work through it and learn from this moment. But spending resources that we do not have for something so petty is not being a good steward. I feel this needs to be an opportunity where we stand beside our brothers and sisters and agree to disagree but not be wasteful. Aren't we supposed to learn and grow from our mistakes if a mistake really was made and not just someone being upset? How can anyone learn and grow if when mistakes are made, decisions are made to impeach someone? Where is the learning and growing come in? Because all I see you teaching anyone is paying attention to this matter, that we all need to sit down and shut up. Don't every single one of you ask yourself each other, ask yourself and each other why more people are not involved? Could it be because of instances like this where absolutely no one benefits? I guarantee that not one single person in this room is perfect. Why would you request our mayor to not lead and correct any city employee according to the MOU the city tried to make Travis sign? It takes a team of individuals to make successful, so why would the city try to stop a mayor from correcting wrongdoing he is seeing? It's... Every single one of you sitting up there should be thankful to know that the mayor is going to hold every city employee accountable for his or her actions. I personally would expect every one of you elected officials to do so if a city employee is doing wrong. As an HR officer of my place of employment, I would be thankful to know I have a team backing me, to be sure we as a city are always leading with our best foot forward. As an HR officer, I also understand the very thin line that Mayor Travis put himself on with publishing the city employees' discipline on his social media page. And this is where it gets tough. In my opinion, he never released that employee's name, so was some wrongdoing done? It's that gray area. This is where I say we correct and we redirect. I don't feel Mayor meant any malicious wrongdoing, so should the four of you be wasting our tax dollars for something that isn't so cut and dry and could drag out for months? Are you being good stewards to spend this money just to get him out a few months early to only possibly be reelected again, considering he has 97% support from the community? I could understand if the issue was something more serious, but I just don't understand the thinking involved with this one. How does the city employee get discipline of suspension with pay, but a mayor makes a small mistake and four of you are trying to get him impeached? Please explain to me how a city employee in a city vehicle gets less disciplined for breaking a law and then potentially could have been the reason why someone could have died preventing an emergency vehicle from getting to an emergency, while a mayor who is trying his best, who have made a small mistake, gets shafted by the likes of his peers?
Thank you, your time is up.
I'll use my husband's three minutes, how about that?
You can't pass.
You can't pass? Okay.
Here, do you want to read the rest of it?
Lady, you don't have a clue. I'm curious.
Uh, hey, uh, towards the cancel, please.
Here, I'm going to read.
State your name.
Craig Gasser.
Start right there.
It says, "While a mayor who is trying his best, whom, uh, I don't have my damn glasses on, may have made a small mistake." You can't see. I can't read. Shafted by the likes of his passes. Makes me wonder who the city employee is and which one of you is friends with. Tell us how that makes sense. If there is going to be discipline, then let it be for fair across the board, not one-sided to fit someone's agenda. We see enough of this frivolous spending in our federal government. We sure don't need to see our local officials wasting our tax dollars on something that I feel strongly should be handled amongst yourselves in those closed doors. If rules need updated, then sit down and brainstorm and make some adjustments and accommodate everyone, but stop wasting our tax dollars to line the attorney's pockets as they are the only ones who benefits from this situation. I am curious as how to... How Mayor made hostile work environment? If he did, I'm sure we will see some evidence of it in his trial. If there is no evidence presented to prove such, I would suggest the four of you who voted to start these proceedings expect to not get reelected because you have the public's attention and the sleeping beast is starting to wake up in your nonsense.
All right, on to tonight's agenda. I am not aware of anything that needs to be added or removed from this evening's agenda.
Move to approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
Motion to approve the agenda as presented by Alderman Polley, second by Alderman Schenkel. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? On to the mayor's report. I do not have anything this evening to report. On... There's no presentations on to the special committees and staff, the administrators' report.
It sounds like the pool repair has been completed.
Yeah.
Very good. Looks like it was a little bit more difficult.
Yeah, it didn't go as easy as I thought it would. Never does, though.
Looks like we got a good report from our transfer station inspection.
Yeah.
You want to comment on that?
Most people goes to the transfer station, and the first thing they think is it stink and filthy, and most of the time it is, but those guys, uh, employees over there, they've really been putting a lot of effort in trying to keep that place clean and satisfy the DNR. I think it's paying off because they did not find one issue over there this last inspection, so that don't happen very often.
That's something to be proud of there.
Yeah.
All right, on to the October 2025 financial statements.
Just a few comments on that, but I have for you all, uh, ones, if any, of those, that, uh, course conflict, uh, about the three hour run over on that one, uh, the paging of this course conflict part law. We did not have that in the budget, that's completely possible, we completed it prior about a year, and so, uh, that's keeping our budget first month of the year. The other thing I wanted to note is, uh, on our general sales tax, uh, and our prop fee sales tax, uh, this month, uh, regarding $17,000, we were able to, what we were brought up last year in the month of October. We did a 21% increase over the prior year, which is, I'm very pleased to see that, uh, and that on prop fee were almost 18% over last year. So, good progress there on sales tax, I know it's just one month, but the profit's still.
That's a big change.
And the other thing, uh, on the profit statement point is, uh, the war distribution market plan combined for, uh, October, not, uh, $21,000 dollars in the month of October. For the partners that have been struggling with cash flow. It's not reflected in the cash flow yet, I'm taking it as long as it's still in receivable status, but, uh, to have that positive, um, net income for the month, I was pleased to see that, something nice. I'm always very worried what's happening with the water, uh, if it's struggling for a couple of years, so. A few notes that I had, and anything else to roll and discuss.
Do you think that tax increase is because of the Love Station?
Pardon?
Do you think the extra tax money is coming from that Love Station up there?
You have to think so, it has to be coming from there. I'd, to get the exact, I'd like to pull the report on the state, the area, and find where it's all charged from, but, uh, it's very complicated.
And that's not including the fuel tax, that would be sales.
Yeah, the fuel tax, uh, we run like before, and it's also up 9% over the last year, it's smaller dollars, but, uh, $2,000 higher than it was last year, which is, represents 9.37% increase this past year as well, so.
We need a motion to approve that. Now, this is just a general. Sorry, just over here. All right, uh, there is no old business, on to new business, and ordinance to amend sections 110 dot 060, 115 dot 100, and 215 dot 140 relating to mayoral duties and powers and responsibilities.
Make the motion, the ordinance to be read the first time by title only. Second.
Motion, the ordinance to be read the first time by title only by Alderman Polley, second by Alderman Jones. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
An ordinance of the City of Fredericton, Missouri to amend section 110.060, entitled 1 Government Code, Chapter 110. Mayor and Board of Alderman to further amend section 115.100, entitled 1 Government Code, Chapter 115. City officials and to further amend section 215.140, entitled 2. Public health and safety and welfare, 215, nuisances relating to the mayor... The mayor... The mayoral duties, sorry, my throat's scratching. Duties, powers, and responsibilities established in the effective date repelling all ordinances in conflict herewith, rest by reference. Long, absent. Polley.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Brown is absent. Huckabee.
Aye.
Schenkel.
Aye.
Motion, the ordinance to be read the second time by title only, please.
Second.
Motion to approve a second time by title only by Alderman Polley, second by Alderman Jones. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
An ordinance of the City of Fredericton, Missouri to amend section 110.060, entitled 1 Government Code, Chapter 110. Mayor and Board of Alderman to further amend section 115.100, entitled 1 Government Code, Chapter 115. City officials and further amend section 215.140, entitled 2. Public health and safety and welfare, Chapter 215, nuisances relating to mayoral duties and power of your step... Responsibilities establishing the effective date repelling all ordinances in conflict herewith, rest by reference. Long, absent. Polley.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Brown, absent. Huckabee.
Aye.
Schenkel.
Aye.
Ordinance passes.
Number two, ordinance adopting subdivision of plat for NNC subdivision.
Make a motion, the ordinance to be read the first time by title only.
Second. Motion to approve the first time by title only by Alderman Jones, second by Alderman Schenkel. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
An ordinance adopting a subdivision plat for NNC subdivision, a minor subdivision as provided in section 410.030 and 410.150 of the Code of Ordances of the City of Fredericton, accepting dedication of easement and the properties described, accepting restrictions if any filed thereof, therewith authorizing the recording of said plat and establishing the effective date repelling all ordinances in conflict herewith, rest by reference. Long, absent. Polley.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Brown, absent. Huckabee.
Aye.
Schenkel.
Aye.
Motion, the ordinance to be read the second time by title only, please.
Second.
Motion, the ordinance to be read the second time by title only by Alderman Polley, second by Alderman Jones. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
An ordinance adopting subdivision plat for NNC subdivision, a minor subdivision as provided in section 410.030 and 410.150 of the Code of Ordances of the City of Fredericton, accepting dedication of easements and properties described, accepting restrictions if any filed therewith, authorizing the recording of said plat, establishing the effective date, and repelling all ordinances in conflict therewith, rest by reference. Long, absent. Polley.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Brown is absent. Huckabee.
Aye.
Schenkel.
Aye.
Ordinance passes.
Uh, on to number three, resolution designating and appointing a grant administrator for the Delta Regional Authority.
On that one, I do need to rise to designate, in the event that I'm not at the city, somebody else designate a position that you would want to handle the grant reporting and administrative tasks.
What?
So, we need a second.
You need a name?
Would be a title.
A title, yeah.
Theresa.
City clerk.
Okay. That was confusing.
So, you're making the motion?
Yes.
I'll second that.
Motion for the city clerk to be added.
Okay.
Uh, by Alderman Schenkel, second by Alderman Jones. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Then do we need to...
Before we need to read the thing?
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, so moved.
Second.
Is it by title only?
Yeah, by title only, please. We don't need the whole thing.
Motion to read the resolution by title only by Alderman Schenkel, second by Alderman Jones. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
A resolution designating and adopting a grant administrator for the Delta Regional Authority State's Economic Development Assistance Program. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution.
You did agree to that, right?
I see.
We didn't ask you if it was okay.
All right, number four, an ordinance authorizing the president of the board to execute an agreement between the city and Mayor Parker relative to the settlement of issues given rise to articles of impeachment.
I make a motion, that ordinance to be read in full, please.
Second.
Motion, the ordinance to be read in full by Alderman Schenkel, second by Alderman Jones. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
All right, I do not need to read this, so here we go.
Yeah.
An ordinance authorizing the president of the Board of Alderman of the City of Fredericton, Missouri, executing an agreement binding between... You just referred to me, did you do that?
What's that?
I guess it's not a problem, I start. Never mind. All right, an ordinance authorizing the president of the Board of Alderman of the City of Fredericton, Missouri, executing an agreement binding between the City of Fredericton and Mayor Travis Parker relative to settlement of the issues giving rise to articles of impeachment issued November 10th, 2025. Further said ordinance shall authorize and direct the city clerk to attest the signature on the president of the Board of Alderman. Whereas the residents are in need of elected city officials working together for the betterment of the city, and whereas the Board of Alderman of the City of Fredericton, Missouri have therefore reviewed the agreement marked Exhibit A and attached it to and incorporated herein as it fully set forth. And whereas the Board of Alderman of the City of Fredericton, Missouri, due to the rightful to enter into said agreement. Now their board will be ordained by the Board of Alderman of the City of Fredericton, Missouri as follows. That the Board of Alderman of the City of Fredericton, Missouri, approved the agreement marked Exhibit A, which is attached here to and incorporated herein as it fully set forth, between the City of Fredericton and Mayor Travis Parker, for the purposes set forth herein above, to give it the such changes therein as shall be approved by the officers of the city executing say, which are consistent with the provisions and intent of this legislation, and necessary desirable convenient or proper in order to carry out the matters herein authorized. It is the belief of the Board of Alderman that it is in the best interest of the citizens of the City of Fredericton, Missouri, that the city entering to said agreement. That the president of the Board of Alderman and other appropriate city officials are hereby authorized to execute the agreement in substantial form as Exhibit A, foreign on behalf of the City of Fredericton, Missouri, and such additional documents, and take any and all actions necessary, desirable, convenient, or prudent, in order to carry out the intent of this legislation. That the city clerk of the City of Fredericton is hereby authorized and directed to attest to the signature of the president of the Board of Alderman on the said agreement. If any section, subsection, sentence, clause, or phrase or portion of this ordinance is for any reason held invalid or unconstitutional by any court of competent jurisdiction, such portion shall be deemed a separate, distinct, independent provision, and such holdings shall not affect the validity of the remaining portions thereof. This ordinance shall take effect and be enforced from and after its passage and approval by the Board of Alderman and after its approval and execution by the president of the Board of Alderman. And with the agreement itself, it's a settlement agreement. This settlement agreement may even enter into as of the 8th day of December, 2025, binding between the City of Fredericton and Mayor Travis Parker, hereafter mayor, hereafter city witness. Whereas on September 2nd, 2024, a city employee filed a claim that the mayor was creating hostile working environment. And whereas in response to said city's employees' claim, the Board of Alderman adopted a revised personnel flow chart in September, 2024, and mayor agreed to follow the chart in relation to the city administrator performing the direct supervision of employees to know that under his supervision on the chart. And whereas on August 11th, 2025, another city employee not under the mayor's direct supervision of the personnel flow chart complained of the mayor's method of discipline. And whereas on December 26th, 2025, the mayor posted on Facebook regarding the above referenced matters and made further legal assertions as against the city. A copy said Facebook-based post is attached here too as Exhibit 1. And whereas on November 10th, 2025, the Board of Alderman passed a resolution bringing articles of impeachment as against the mayor, which was amended on November 25th, 2025. A copy of such resolution articles as amended is attached here too as Exhibit 2. And whereas the parties heretofore desire to resolve such issues and move on with the business of the city. Now therefore, for the considerations herein expressed, it is agreed by you between the city and mayor as follows. Number one, continue in office. So long as mayor abides by the terms of this agreement, the Board of Alderman shall not further pursue the articles of impeachment as attached as Exhibit 2. Number two, comply with law. Mayor shall comply with all applicable policies, ordinances, statutes, or other legal requirements related to the City of Fredericton. Mayor shall bring procedural concerns, including Sunshine Act or other legal concerns, to the attention of the city clerk and city attorney as soon as he recognizes them. So, three, no employee disciplinary decisions. Mayor should not unilaterally make employee disciplinary decisions nor administer employee discipline while in the office of mayor. This includes the president of the office and any future terms for which he may be elected. The Code of Ordances shall be amended to reflect that the city administrator shall address employee discipline with the exception of the chief of police, as set forth in the personnel manual, as amended from time to time, with duration from the Board of Alderman passing. Number four, public announcement. Mayor Board of Alderman shall issue a joint public announcement that states remain of both sides of the current controversy. However, they have made a joint commitment to work together, go on forward for the betterment by the City of Fredericton, including terminating proceedings to impeach the mayor. Number five, powers. Neither the mayor nor any of the Alderman will initiate any derogatory statements about each other in any form for a period of one year for the adoption of this agreement by the city. Number six, subject matter. This agreement relates only to the subject matter stated herein. Should impeachment grounds arise unrelated to the matters listed in Exhibit 2, this agreement shall not restrict appropriate action by the Board of Alderman. And should mayor have social contact with an employee or other non... Other non-city business-related communications while off the job, such contact shall not violate this agreement. Waiver. The waiver by either party of any provision or condition of this agreement shall not be construed to be a waiver of any other provision or condition of this agreement, and shall not preclude the other party from demanding performance at accordance with the other terms thereof, nor shall any such waiver be construed to be permanent unless such waiver is in writing and signed by both the city and mayor. Okay, everybody? Severability, the inability or enforceability of any provision of this agreement shall not affect the validity or enforceability of any other provisions hereof, and this agreement shall be construed in all respects as such invalid or unenforceable conditions was admitted. The inability or unenforceability of any provision of this agreement to any person or circumstance shall not affect the validity or enforceability of such provision as it may apply to other persons or circumstances. You have called the vote.
Long is absent. Polley.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Brown is absent. Huckabee.
Aye.
Schenkel.
Aye.
Does the ordinance need to be read again, Mary?
Just a time and a moment.
Okay, I just need a motion and a second in that respect, please.
Make a motion, it be read the second time by title only, please.
Second.
Motion on the floor by Alderman Schenkel, second by Alderman Jones to read the ordinance, second time by title only. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Same sign.
An ordinance authorizing... Okay. An ordinance authorizing the president of the Board of Alderman of Fredericton, Missouri, to execute an agreement binding between the City of Fredericton and the Mayor Travis Parker relative to the settlement of issues giving the rise to articles of impeachment issued on November 10th, 2025. Further said ordinance shall authorize and direct the city clerk to attest the signature of the president of the Board of Alderman, rest by reference. Long is absent. Polley.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Brown is absent. Huckabee.
Aye.
Schenkel.
Aye.
Ordinance passes.
On to item number five, an ordinance authorizing the SDEAP grant administrator for the City of Fredericton to execute an award agreement.
Make a motion, the ordinance to be read the first time by title only, please.
Second. Motion to read the first time by title only by Alderman Jones, second by Alderman Schenkel. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
An ordinance authorizing the SDEAP grant administrator... SDEAP grant administrator of the City of Fredericton, Missouri, to execute an award... An agreement binding between the City of Fredericton and Delta Regional Authority to relative to the grant from the State's Economic Development Assistance Program, and further said ordinance shall authorize and direct the city clerk to attest the signature of the SDEAP grant administrator, rest by reference. Huckabee.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Long is absent. Brown is absent. Polley.
Aye.
Schenkel.
Aye.
Make a motion, the ordinance to be read the second time by title only, please.
Second.
Motion to read the ordinance here a second time by title only by Alderman Polley, second by Alderman Jones. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
An ordinance authorizing the SDEAP grant administrator of the City of Fredericton, Missouri, executing an award agreement binding between the City of Fredericton and the Delta Regional Authority relative to the grant from the State's Economic Development Assistance Program, and further said ordinance shall authorize and direct the city clerk to attest the signature of the SDEAP grant administrator, rest by reference. Huckabee.
Aye.
Long is absent. Polley.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Brown is absent. Schenkel.
Aye.
Ordinance passes.
On to accounts payable.
Make a motion, we pay our bills.
Second.
Motion to pay the bill for Alderman. Motion to pay the bill for Alderman Shankle, second by Alderman Jones, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Remarks of special privilege by the Alderman?
Just want to give a thanks to whoever was involved in, uh, you know, Miracles on Man, I know Chamber has something to do with it, and then also, you know, Tara and that group there, that was just a, seemed like a really good event, Christmas parade was nice, downtown's beautiful, so just good job, everybody involved in making it work, make it work crisp, April, Serex, again, so they did, they did a good job, but it was like a good event, so.
Just an FYI, nobody picks up the candy cane?
The muck cat boot.
One thing, we could outhold him next time.
The boots on the parking lot.
Oh. All right, um, there is one closed session item on the end of the night, uh, related to hiring, firing, discipline, promoting, and setting employees per one-ten dot zero-two-one-three hours ago, personnel records, performance ratings, or applications per six-ten dot zero-two-one-thirteen hours ago. Do I have a motion to go to closed session?